I'd like to call the order of the May 7th, 2024, regular meeting of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. Would you like to say the pledge, Mr. Zabudio?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
It looks like we have not only a quorum, but a full commission, so that's good. I guess I was supposed to do that before the pledge, but we'll just call that good. Okay, so the next item is Item C, which is the consent calendar. All these items listed under the consent calendar would be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the commission or a member of the audience wishes to speak about an item, in which case the chair will pull the item from the consent calendar to be heard. So, does anybody from the public have any desire for me not to approve this as being a consent calendar? Seeing no volunteers, I would entertain a motion, this is to approve the minutes from March 5th of the regular meeting and approve the minutes of April 2nd of the study session.
Make a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Unanimous decision. Okay, so Item D1, I think we should hear this all as one shot. So unless anybody objects to that. So Item D1 is ZC 2024-02 and CUP-2024-01. This is a request by Christian, Christian Ayla. Hope I said that right. Or Ai.
Ayala? Ayala?
Ayala, thank you. On behalf of CNM's Landscaping LLC for a rezone of approximately six acres of land from industrial, I to commercial light CL with a conditional use permit to allow for a contractor's yard and a single-family residence with future greenhouses. This property is located at 2745 Arizona Trail, Chino Valley, Arizona. Assessor parcel number 306-17-001-C is in Charlie. Has anybody on the commission talked to anybody on this item?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Jessica, how are you?
I'm well, thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, good evening, and fellow commissioners. My name is Jessica Barrigan, your senior planner for the Development Services Department. Before you this evening again is the request for consideration of two separate items, they will be presented concurrently. As mentioned, the first request is for the rezone, ZC 2024-02. This request is to rezone approximately six acres of land from industrial to commercial light. And the second request is for a conditional use permit, CUP 2024-01. And this request will allow for the existing single-family residents to remain in conjunction with the family's future business landscape contractor's yard operation. This first slide, you can see the six acre subject parcel is identified there in the blue. It is located at 2745 Arizona Trail. The subject site and the properties to the north and east are currently zoned, I for industrial. The property to the east is vacant while the northern property operates a masonry and lumberyard. The properties in all other directions, to the south and to the west, are zoned SR1, that's for single-family residential, minimum one acre, and contain existing single-family residences with the Sunrise subdivision directly to the west. The uses that are permitted by matter of right in the current industrial classification are outlined in Section 3.17 of the town's UDO. You can see there on your screen where it's flashing, just to show how you can get to it, looking at the interactive map. You can click on that link where it says Chino Valley zoning, it will take you straight to our zoning page where you will see that. Some of the uses that are described in, oh, I'm sorry. Some of the uses that are described in the industrial zone that you see there is manufacturing, automotive salvage yards, commercial kennels, and such, to name a few. And moving on to the general plan. The subject property falls within the horizontal multi-use land use designation. It is defined the town's recently adopted 2040 general plan. As such, the applicant's request to rezone the property to commercial light zoning district would be in conformance with the intent of the general plan. There you can see the star is blinking to show the location within that designation. And then a thumbs up over here to show where CL, that land use designation is allowed in that HMU district. In front of you is an image of the front of the site along Arizona Trail, where you can see, observe to the left side of the site, where it would be north to the parcel, is the masonry and lumberyard, and then to the right side you can see residents. A neighborhood meeting was held for this request earlier last month on April 4th, 2024, at the subject property. Sixteen neighbors were in attendance, most being residents of the adjacent Sunrise subdivision. The neighbors were generally in support of the rezone to help prevent higher impact industrial uses from moving in. Some questions that were discussed at the meeting include daily business operations and the potential traffic, noise, and light pollution impacts it might have. Here in front of you, you see the proposed site configuration that the applicant provided. The applicant will occupy the existing single-family residence shown on the lower level of the parcel on the eastern boundary, as illustrated there in Phase 1. And likewise, existing accessory structures and the connects box for equipment storage will remain. As you can see in the site plan, it does indicate the proposed buildings, the building locations for the future greenhouses, along with parking and access road. And the applicant will be submitting a complete technical, landscape, and lighting plan for review and approval prior to building permit issuance for Phase 2. Approval of the requested items today would allow the existing single-family residents with accessory structures and related equipment to remain in conjunction with the request for the contractor's yard business operation. The business does propose to operate Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., with occasional Saturdays. In order to effectuate these requests, the property will need to be rezoned down from industrial to commercial light. This introduces a less intensive land use to the neighborhood compared to what is currently allowed under industrial. It further corrects poor land use planning practices that placed higher intensity industrial uses next to single-family residences. And this rezone down is necessary to help the surrounding community in their transitioning to less intensive uses, while the CUP will allow for that single-family residence to remain, along with its associated equipment. With that said, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward to the town council a recommendation for approval of the CNM's landscape rezone and conditional use permit, subject to the conditions that are outlined in the conditions of approval in your report. That does conclude my presentation. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is also here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on the commission have any questions, or Jessica, while she's up there? Thank you, ma'am, we may call you up. In a minute, ma'am, the public will have an opportunity to speak. Okay, so the applicant is here, I think? Would you like to come up and let us know what you're trying to do there? You are not required to do so. Please state your name.
My name is Mario Ayala, owner of CNM Landscaping. So we are attendant to use the property as a storage, you know, for our trucks and equipment and material mainly, going in and out, morning and evenings, for storage and whatnot, so.
Thank you. Hold on a second, does anybody have questions for Mr. Ayala? Am I getting that right?
Yes.
Sorry for mangling it earlier.
A question, a couple of them actually. The landscaping you'll be doing, is it for residential, commercial, both?
Mainly residential, yes.
And I see the future greenhouses, what kind of things will you be planting in there?
It's just gonna be decorative plants mainly, that's seeing around for residential houses, yeah. Small plants, pretty much.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We may call you back up after the public gets a chance to ask some questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the portion of the meeting that we're gonna open up for the public to come up and ask questions or state their opinion on this project. When you come up to the microphone, you'll state your name. You'll be polite, concise, don't be repetitive, and we'll all get through this in fine style. So ma'am, you had your hand up earlier, would you like to come up? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sharon Riley, and I live across the street from the proposed situation. And I just really wanted to be here to learn more about what was happening. I missed the last meeting, unfortunately. But I wanted to learn more, and I did feel in alignment with the concerns about light and with the greenhouses with the use of water. I just had my weld dug another 20 feet down, because it's so dry there, and I have mature trees that need to be watered. So I am concerned about water usage, and I wanted to know what you guys were thinking about, how much water would you guys be needing for the greenhouses? And the other concern is the light. I know there are other greenhouses in the area, and the light is significant, and there's stars, I can see the Milky Way, which is a huge thing, it's very important to me. So the light pollution would be my main concern. And I'm actually right across from where all the trucks come in and out, and the whole road is so chopped up from the trucks going in and out all the time, right across the street from me, that's a concern. So I just wanted to find out if the county is willing to maintain the road better, if Arizona's gonna be more and more used this way, because we are a neighborhood, and the potholes are ridiculous outside my driveway. So those are the main things that I'd like to talk about. It's not that I'm against business either, I think it sounds like a great business. I just want to be sure that the neighborhood is being protected as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Nancy Diffandafer, I also live in the area over on New York Place. And I want to say that I am not opposed to changing the zoning. I think that would be a benefit to us, but I do have several stipulations that I would like to see. One is the type of plants. I would wanna make sure that they are not going to start out doing landscaping plants and decide all of a sudden, oh yeah, marijuana makes much more profit. And so I would like to make sure that the residents of the area would have some kind of stipulation in there as to what they could do. Water is another one of my concerns. In my opinion, all of the greenhouses in Chino Valley ought to be on the Chino Valley water system. And that way, the private wells are protected. I think any kind of landscaping requires a lot of water. And I don't know how that's measured, or what you do about it, but I do think that it's important to protect the residents who have been in that area a long time. I personally have lived in that area for 47 years. And we've had to dig wells deeper a couple of times. And so I would like to make sure that, you know, that that's not in the future for us. Lighting is the other thing. Now Jessica said, when we were over there, that the town is working on some zoning requirements so that the lighting will not be as much of a problem. We were told that they would not have lights on at night. So I would like to think that during, you know, from dusk to dawn, there would definitely be no lights on in the greenhouses. So, you know, those are just some of the stipulations. When we were over there, it appeared to me that you actually had more than one residence on that property at the present time. And I believe that you said only one residence would be there. So I don't know if there are any stipulations about one or more residences there. So I think that pretty much covers my concerns.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alrighty, I'm gonna close the public speaking portion of the meeting. And I would like Jessica to come up first to answer some of the town questions, and then we'll bring the owner up. So, a couple of the comments were water, so I'm gonna put that one to bed right off the bat. The town of Chino Valley and the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council and anybody else that's in Chino Valley does not have control of the water, that's all handled through ADEQ. They control all the water in the state as far as regulating is concerned. There is, if I am not mistaken, no town water over in that area, it's all private wells. And so there's not much we can do about the question about water, because it's not in our jurisdiction. Okay, so we had questions about lighting. Maybe Jessica, you could, since how this is right up your alley here, you could tell us a little bit about the lighting and what goes on over there.
Sure. Like you mentioned, actually the applicant has already been in touch with ADEQ for any kind of water concerns. Lighting requirements, before they enter into Phase 2, they will be required to submit a lighting plan. At that point, I believe the lighting ordinance will be updated to be more in compliance with the Dark Sky, the Dark Sky Association. So we are trying to adopt best management practices in that regard. So by the time Phase 2 comes around, it will be required for the applicant to provide a lighting plan from a lighting professional. And as far as the roads go, that was also addressed during the public meeting, or during the neighborhood meeting. There is not much that we can do at this point, but when Phase 2 comes around, the applicant will be required to submit a traffic impact statement and/or study, and potentially have to improve the adjacent roadway.
Okay, and then there was a concern about whether there was one or two residences on the property.
Yes, it does appear like it would be a residence, it is made to look consistent with the primary structure, so it is being used as an office space. And it is labeled there on the bottom southern boundary of the property.
Okay, so it says existing garage and office.
Yes, and it is to remain as such.
Okay. Because under the conditional use permit, that's all that he's allowed to have, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Alright, and one of the concerns about the lighting, the greenhouses that have some of the lighting issues, if I'm not mistaken, are some of the marijuana facilities. And they do have screening that they're required to use. And I know you guys are working on facilitating that implementation. But if, and I'll bring the owner up to ask this question. One of the questions was, it could be converted to marijuana growing later. And if you could explain to the public, the only place marijuana can be grown is in an industrial area. So Will, you wanna come up and highlight that a little bit?
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the commission, Will Dingy, your Assistant Director here with the town. That is correct, marijuana, recreational and medical can only be cultivated in the industrial zoning district. So this rezoning request actually eliminates that possibility from this property. The residents, or one of the residents did state that they had concerns about being close to that, because there is still also adjacent industrial property. Town code prohibits any sort of cultivation within 500 feet. The parcel can't be within 500 feet of a residence. So there is some level of buffer currently in code to really eliminate that one between El Charo and this site for tonight. So, perfect world, there will not be a medical marijuana cultivation or dispensary anywhere along Arizona Trail.
Okay, and just to be really clear, if that property stays industrial, they could possibly bring a marijuana grow facility in there. And by changing the zoning to commercial light, that eliminates that possibility.
100% factual.
Great. Alright. Any other questions for the town staff?
I have a quick question. From time from Phase 1 to Phase 2, what timeframe are you looking at?
Jessica, deal with that one.
Jessica?
Yes, the applicant gave a three to five-year time span for commencement of Phase 2.
The reason why I'm asking that question is because deal with the roads. That timeframe from Phase 1, you're gonna have a lot of trucks going in, and the roads are gonna be worse than what they are now. So if you have that three to five years, are you gonna have that eroding even more? So that's why.
However, let me, correct me if I'm wrong, because I know our engineer's not here, but that use is already there by right, because it's industrial. So they could have a whole lot worse things there than that greenhouse with the current zoning.
So they won't be required to update the roads in front of their property if they change?
There is nothing that they can do to update it, because it's an existing condition, and you correct me if I'm wrong.
So it would only be if they changed it to an upper?
When Phase 2 comes in, then we got him in a chokehold, and we're gonna force that guy to spend a lot of money.
Yes, our, since there's no development currently, when they do development, I believe it is more than 50% of what's existing or brand new, then they're required to do those updates and improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do wanna mention that the, I got notice this morning that the hearing for the town council date has changed, that that is going to be June 11th now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, so, yes?
Just had a question, currently, what is being done on that parcel? What is the parcel being used for currently?
It is currently just a single-family residence at the moment.
Even though it's industrial, there's no business there at all?
They have, the business that was there previously had moved, and so the applicant has cleaned up the property. It is now vacant and just has a single-family residence.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I live pretty close to there, but that used to be a junkyard there, am I correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, it was a pretty major eyesore for the community.
Thank you.
I might be wrong about that, but I know it was either that property or the one next door to it. Ma'am, I can't let you talk anymore, because it's against the darn rules, I'm sorry. Okay, so would the applicant like to come up and speak to some of the questions that were asked? I think the major one, two major ones were lighting and water.
Water, yes. So about the lighting, all the plants that we'd be growing, they don't require any lighting during the night to grow? It's pretty much to keep them contained. And for the water usage, all it's gonna be in its proper irrigation system, where each plant is gonna be compensating for gallons per minute, so there's no excessive water gonna be used. As far as the roads there, we don't have vehicles over 10,000 pounds, so it's, you know, half-ton trucks or three-quarter ton trucks. So we do carry, you know, materials in our trailers, about three tons max, so it's, you know, the, they might, the conditions of the roads might change a little bit, but not too much, because we don't have heavy equipment going in and out.
So it's not your intent to be operating dump trucks and end dumps and things like that?
Not heavy vehicles or machinery there, yes.
Okay. Lighting and water, and then you talked about the road. I think that kinda covers it. Does anybody have other questions for the property owner?
I would just add that a greenhouse for growing those kind of plants is gonna use less water than an outdoor nursery, so it's gonna...
Yeah, and if I heard you correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounded like you're gonna have them on a drip system where the water is just being directly put into the plants without a spray or anything like that.
Correct, yes. They're all gonna be on the emitters, so emitter lines, you know, like you see in houses or irrigation systems. So it's all gonna be controlled, so there's no excessive water gonna be let out, so it's all contained, yes.
Awesome. Okay, so it sounds like we're through all that. I'm gonna, thank you, sir, for speaking. I'm gonna close the public hearing portion of the meeting. And because nobody's got any questions, I am going to ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve rezone ZC 2024-02 and conditional use permit, CUP-2024-01, as presented, subject to the staff report and information provided during this hearing and the conditions of approval in attachment A.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, which leaves the floor open for some discussion. I think we should possibly entertain the idea of a sunset clause on this project, if he doesn't, or is that applicable if he doesn't move to Phase 2?
Well, you could put a time limit by which he would have to do Phase 2.
Which I'm not interested in doing to put a burden on him, but just to, we've had some things in the past, not anything to do with this gentleman that just flowed out there with no ax and all.
So like if in five years he hasn't added the greenhouses, then he won't be able to add them? Is that what you're thinking?
Maybe he'd have to come back to...
I would say come back, not take something away, but just come back and visit with us again to explain, you know, how his business is doing. And in five years, starting up a business, that's just about the time you can make payroll without sweating too much. So I know that for personal experience. Okay, so can we maybe modify the motion?
Make an amendment for a sunset clause for five years to redress us?
And where the owner...
If you add a sunset clause, that means it goes away.
Maybe we add a requirement that in five years, the owner is required to come back and give us an update on what's going on, which may
Okay.
affect the outcome of his conditional use permit. Can we do that?
Yes.
Would you guys, you two, have any issue with that?
I have no issue.
Alright, so I'm gonna call for a roll call vote. Commissioner Zabudio?
Yes.
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 Speak into the mic, would you?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I vote yes too, so it's unanimous, and we're not gonna explain any votes, because nobody argued. Thank you. Okay, we have some action items possibly, or no?
Just a prior update, or an update on prior cases that went to council here. So we did have three cases from the last time that we spoke. The ZC 2024-01 Travis Bates rezon, that was approved by town council. The final plat amendment for the Del Sol Lot Line Adjustment, that was that subdivision by Wright Homes over off of Salida Del Sol in Perkinsville, that was also approved by town council. And then the fun one, text amendment 2024-01 Metal Storage Containers, that has been tabled until September.
Doggone it.
I know.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So there's also, did we have any questions about any of that?
I don't think so.
What's up? Okay, so there's a information for case process, must be an education moment. Thank you, ma'am.
So what you have in front of you is what the council sees. It occurred to us on staff that you see the Planning Commission staff report that we present to you, but you don't always understand or know...
present to you, but you don't always understand or know or have seen what the council gets. So in the council packet, they have a format that they have to follow, there's a cover sheet that's kind of has a summary on it, but one of the key things that we do is make sure that your minutes are attached. So if they, if the council hasn't watched the Planning Commission meeting, they can read the minutes and pretty much feel like they've been there, because Jeriann does an amazing job of tracking what happens at those meetings. So, you guys probably know that too, if you've missed a meeting, you read the minutes, and you feel like you've been at the meeting, you just didn't get a chance to vote. So we wanted you to be aware of what the council actually sees. It isn't necessarily in the order that we would like it to be in, but we're not in charge of that agenda packet. The clerk is, and she has a software package that's different than what we use, and so hers has to fit within all the items that everybody else submits, and so there has to be a standard cover page that she uses on there. So they get the same staff report that you get, and they add the, we add the minutes to that. So just so you, that you're aware that, um, the council does have that. We can't force anybody to read anything, just like we can't force you guys to read stuff, but it is available to them in their packet. So just wanted to share that with all of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright. There's a sticker than ours. Lucky Dells. Okay, so, thank you for that. We'll have to look through all that. Uh, we've got, next portion is F2, does anybody on the commission have anything they'd like to speak about tonight? Okay.
I, I would just like to remind the public that, um, the road condition that everyone is so concerned about, there was a ballot initiative in twenty nineteen to, uh, have a property tax, I think half percent, to develop, couple million dollars to specifically address the road conditions, and that was voted down almost on a two to one ratio on voting. So, the roads don't get fixed for free. And, as much as you wanna complain about the roads, there's only so much money, and, I believe tomorrow's edition of the Chino Valley Review is going to have an article on voting for home rule, which is, uh, to exceed the allocation that we have for budget. And unlike the federal government, the town of Chino Valley cannot run a deficit. That's it.
Thank you, Gary. So the next part of the meeting is where the chairman gets to speak. In the past, I've used these moments from time to time to educate people on things like the cost of a new grocery store and water, and the effect that we have on water here as far as the commission is concerned, and some other things that we hear about frequently when, in the zoning meetings, because people have concerns and they're not up to speed on exactly how things come together. So we're gonna go into a, um, study session here at the end of this meeting about animal, um, property rights on animals, et cetera, not rights, but how many animals you can have and that sort of business, which I think is gonna be a, a very important discussion that will happen down the road. We don't have many people from the public left after this one agenda item was done with. I think it's important for the public to participate in this process, because it is sticky and has lots of opinions and emotion around it. So I would just encourage people to come to the meetings and, when we have these study sessions, and speak out. And then, that's it for me, and then this comes to the public portion of the meeting. If anybody here from the public would like to step up to the microphone and speak, you can ask about anything that's not on the agenda tonight. We may not be able to help you immediately, but it's recorded, and we can put people in line that maybe can help you out with anything. Does anybody in the public wanna speak tonight? Sir, you come up to the microphone and state your name? On this, on, if, we're still in the Planning and Zoning Meeting?
Alright, I, that's what I thought you said, tonight.
Okay.
Alright, so we still talk about, during the work session, or whatever you call that, study session.
Yeah, would you please tell us your name?
Yes, sir, it's Al Gibbons.
Okay, so, what this part of the meeting is concerned about is what is Planning and Zoning Business outside of what was on the agenda tonight, if somebody wants to come up and tell us, things like the roads are bad, and they want a new grocery store and all this stuff. You're welcome to do that at this point. There isn't much we can do, we can't really respond, but it gives you a chance to state what you want, and maybe town staff can direct you, but it sounds like you're wanting to speak at the next thing.
Correct, I was within, till you said tonight.
Yeah, for this meeting tonight, for this part of it.
Alright, you got it.
Because once we shut this mess down, we start with another meeting.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, so, I'm closing the public portion of the meeting, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you all for being here, thank you staff for the good work. Stay tuned for Part Two.